Yeah.
They had very little suspension, no windscreen. They hit rain. And they ended up in Rapid City. So.
Yeah. That can be tough. Alright.
Okay, I'm gonna call this study session to an end. Before we, uh, do we have a call order? Okay, so the call of the order and flex.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Shouting. Good?
Alright, before I turn this over to the superintendent, I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge our colleague Karen Viall's birthday today. Happy birthday.
Thank you.
I will spare you our singing voices, but happy birthday.
No disclosure of age, thank you.
I will also note that my first grader and second grader have their spring concert at seven o'clock tonight at Stadium High School, so I will be leaving a few minutes before seven and turning the gavel over to you Karen if we've not completed the study session by then. And with that, superintendent.
So look at that audience out there, woo-hoo. We appreciate, we appreciate all those blue shirts from our human resources department. They are ready, and I know that we have M and O here for, M and O here two together. So we have two consultants I'd like to introduce, make sure I get your names pronounced correctly. I'm really gonna try to do it correctly. Jevon Powell.
Put your hand up.
And Peter Scontrino.
You got a hundred percent.
Alright, that's good, good way to start. So we asked Mr. Powell and Mr. Scontrino to do another review. We've had one done of the Urban Collaborative, the Urban Collaborative reviewed our special ed department. We also had a review of our gifted and talented department. And so one of the best practices that we are trying to observe in Tacoma is to take a look at our current practice and departments and make sure that we know. And the bottom line is it doesn't matter what you audit or look at, you're gonna find that, you know, there's a standard established and that we are above and we're below some of those. And our job is to take, is to have an external, it takes guts to have an external consultant come in and take a unbiased look at our operations and then just tell us how close we are to the standard. So we appreciate that. And then our job as a staff is to respond, not react, but respond to the work that we get from the consultant. And some of those things we may not agree with, we may say, mm, no, we don't think they got that right, we're not gonna look at that. And this one is where, oh, we knew this before they came in, that it was the way it was gonna be. And some we may say, oh, that's a surprise. And what's the industry standard for that? And what does the process look like? And so we're excited. I appreciate Lynn Rosellini and her team and Steve Murakami and his team because they have embraced these reports. And you're gonna find today, our review's gonna have two phases. One, we're gonna ask our consultants to go through the process that they used and then to talk about their findings, their strengths, their recommendations. And then we're gonna have Steve, and Steve, you'll have to introduce your new employee. We'll talk about some of the steps they're taking, what our priority work is going to be. Some of it's already been started. The one nice thing about a review is that you can look at some things and say, oh, we already had that planned, we were getting ready to do it, we're on it. And so we're gonna do that. Then we're gonna go through HR, same process. And then after that, we're gonna take a look at our new proposals that we've gotten for innovative schools. So, should be an exciting session. Everybody who's here should take lots of pictures and lots of tweets because it's gonna be cool. So, I'm gonna turn it over to Peter.
Thank you, and thank you for giving us this opportunity to help Tacoma Public Schools continue to improve your processes and services. When Jevon and I are asked, what's the role of a consultant in a process like this? Our role is to identify truth and to hold it up to you. Truth from our perspective and truth as we see the data providing it. And then the organization has a chance to take that and work with it. Scontrino-Powell is a small firm of organizational psychologists. We're based in Seattle area. Tonight, there are four of us here. I'm Peter Scontrino, Jevon Powell, Emily Pelosi, and Bobby Bullock is out in the audience someplace.
He's on his way.
Okay. Emily and I worked on the HR review and Jevon and Bobby worked on the M and O review. We followed the same process for both of those reviews. So I'm gonna describe the process we followed. It'll apply both to HR and to M and O. And then I'll go into some findings, recommendations for HR. And then Jevon will have a chance to do the same thing for M and O. We're data-driven, so the process we followed in both departments included three steps. The first step was data collection. Second step was data analysis. And the third step was recommendations for improvement. When we do a review, we like to use teams of people who work in the organization. So we had two teams of school employees helped us conduct the department reviews. Our HR review team included eight employees. Team members paired with consultants either Emily or me for 12 focus groups that included 70 employees. We also conducted 12 one-on-one interviews. And Jevon interviewed all the board members for your input about both HR and M and O. In addition, we gathered information on best practices, HR costs, and other information filed by Tacoma Public Schools and other organizations. So we had a wealth of information that we had for our analysis. The consultant team analyzed all the information, we prepared a draft report, and we presented the draft report to the HR review team. And Jevon went through the report line by line by line with the review team, soliciting their input. And HR team members offered suggestions, and many of those Jevon entered into his computer on the spot, so we changed the report real time as we were moving forward. We didn't follow all the suggestions because we couldn't support all the suggestions with the data that we had. So that's the process we used. Everyone was responsive and people weren't holding back. People in the focus groups were happy to be there, had great comments, regularly talked about strengths, or talked about areas for improvement. So we didn't feel like we were pulling teeth at all. The process went very, very smoothly. So let me stop and see if you have any questions about the process we followed.
Any questions, your comments?
Okay, so our highlights. You have the whole report, and I'm not gonna go into every single recommendation from the report, but the highlights we had. School employees see a significant improvement in HR processes and productivity within the past two years. So they're saying HR is on the right track and they are improving. People perceive HR departments made improvements in customer service and they continue to focus on improvements in customer service. And as a service department, that's really important. Some things that need improvement. People perceive that HR does not have enough employees with technical job-related skills. A lot of the employees were hired from the district and were, and learned HR after coming to the district. So we're gonna have a suggestion around improving the technical job-related skills for HR. Your computer system is Lawson. Lawson creates a lot of headaches for HR. And as we collected data, we came to the conclusion that HR capabilities need to be explored. Look at other organizations around the United States using Lawson and with staff becoming more proficient in using Lawson. We have a recommendation that you implement best practices for hiring new employees. We did a study for the Professional Education Standards Board last year where we identified best practices on hiring. HR's had that for a few months and they're already integrating those in the way they're hiring, so that's a huge step forward. We believe that HR should add an organization development professional to the HR staff. There's a lot of opportunity for organization development, which includes team building and other issues where the district could benefit dramatically. And we suggest that HR explore the Society for Human Resource Management or some other professional HR group to provide training so that all HR professional staff can receive actual certification and improve their skill level. And then Jevon and I have a footnote to both of these reports. As we were looking at the organization, we saw many, many improvement opportunities and it brought us to the conclusion that the district should hire a continuous improvement expert. A lot of organizations call it a lean expert to further advance your continuous improvement efforts. You've been doing a lot of things, but we think that position would more than pay for itself in helping the organization streamline and move forward what you're doing. So the next step, you're gonna see in a second, the next step is for HR to use this report to prepare an action plan so you can see what they're going to do to build upon the information you received.
So I think in the essence of the, why don't we go ahead and do the maintenance and operation recommendations and then we'll have the two teams present.
Okay.
Can I ask just one kind of clarifying question? When you talk about the lean expert, you know, continuous progress, is that someone who is experienced in HR or tell me what kind of person you envision in that position?
That would somebody who has implemented lean in other organizations. It touches not just HR. Jevon and I have done a lot of work with lean and we've seen people from various backgrounds, industrial engineering, production management, who have developed lean expertise to help the organization. So would not, it would, the process, the tools apply to any department in the organization. It would not have an HR-specific focus.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Steve, do you wanna walk through, or excuse me, Jevon, walk through the M and O's side of it?
Yeah, I'm happy to do that, thank you. One of the things that I would point out, there are actually two things that I would point out that are just small differences in terms of the process that M and O, that the M and O review followed. It's just a little bit different from HR. One is that Peter mentioned that we certainly saw a lot of engagement, a lot of people interested in talking to us, so much so that I received a number of phone calls from staff in the Maintenance and Operations Department. And these folks were not on the list of interviewees, but they certainly wanted to be interviewed. And so I talked with them on the phone a little bit and encouraged them to send me any kind of input they wanted via email, but also let them know that it was not gonna be possible for us to interview all 300 some odd staff in Maintenance and Operations. And so that's why we were select about that. So those unsolicited phone calls, I think, are worth noting. The other thing that the Maintenance and Operations Review Team did do, and this was dependent upon district staff to do this, is there were two benchmarking site visits conducted by team members of that M and O review team. And so they went to a couple of nearby school districts to see, to ask a series of questions and see how those Maintenance and Operation departments were functioning and if there were any things, any ideas that we could borrow from those other school districts. And some of those findings are incorporated into the final report that we offered. So those are just two, two small comments about a slight difference in the process that unfolded. In terms of our findings or conclusions, we were able to identify a number of strengths within the Maintenance and Operations Department. The majority of people described M and O as doing a good job of responding to maintenance requests, being highly responsive, highly, you know, and doing so in a timely fashion. The second strength that was noted is that the employees and tradespeople at M and O are, were widely regarded as competent and effective in the work that they do. And then the third was that custodial staff similarly were seen as doing a good job of maintaining the appearance and cleanliness of buildings and grounds. On the other hand, there were a number of significant weaknesses that emerged in the review. First was that the organizational culture or the environment at Maintenance and Operations was often described as inconsistent with some of the district's policies and expectations related to a civil workplace. And so this was, this was something that was brought to our attention in, as I said, the vast majority of the interviews and focus groups that we conducted. And it was certainly something that was of concern for us as outside consultants. People interviewed also indicated that there were some leadership and managerial shortcomings within M and O and some of the, some of the strong indicators that we looked at there were a lack of consistent, well, just a lack of metrics or a lack of consistently used metrics, a lack of managerial or supervisory oversight. Current leadership at the time was, was not meeting on a regular basis. And so from our perspective, these were some things that are just baseline level required in order to run an organization effectively. It also became apparent that the supervisors who were in place were spread very thinly and were really stretched so thin that it was a struggle for them to effectively supervise. So it kind of had this cascading effect of problems within M and O. The final thing that we noted was that there was a succession plan in place already. The current, or, well, there was, the succession plan was already laid out, it was, it was in written form, and there was a timeframe in place. And one of the suggestions that we, that we saw was to speed up that succession planning process. Also alongside with that, one of the things that we noted was that it would be useful for, for the successor in leadership of M and O to, because that successor was Steve Murakami. And so we noted Steve's need for additional managerial experience and managerial support as he would move into that role. So that was another area that we noted as a need and made note of that in our recommendations as well. Okay. Any questions, your comments?
Okay, so Steve, will you introduce your new employee?
Sure. It's my pleasure to introduce Steve Story, our new Director of Maintenance and Operations. When I took oversight of Maintenance and Operations last July, then Director Pete Shoup and I started talking about our main goal and creating some vision and mission statement that we could get our folks to buy into and understand how they really support the four strategic goals that the district, that the board has established. And that to really understand and know them and use it as a filter in everyday work so that when we're out there, they're, they're clear about they are supporting every student every day. And when the, at the time that the third-party review was initiated, we were a little worried and we had to stop kind of some of the pieces that we were putting in play. But we were happy to see the report in terms of, it's really a framework of opportunities. And so we're excited about a lot of the pieces that Pete and I were talking about then are highlighted in the report and then a few additional. And so we've really taken a look. I have to commend Pete Shoup, who's here in the audience. Pete recognized that, you know, he came up through the operations side and that his strength really was there and that was one of the areas that needed focus. And so he stepped down from the directorship of Maintenance and Operations and is now in a new position as our Operations Manager. So when I needed to fill that position because we thought leadership and creating a clear vision and a direction that we wanted to go, I called Steve Story, who I have known for about six years through working in nonprofit organizations. He was president over three conferences for the Washington Association of Maintenance and Operations Administrators. I called Steve and said, alright, no one I probably can't get you, who's the second-best director in our state? And after about a month of twisting his arm, I got him to, to apply. And so we, I like to think we stole him from Bethel School District. But you won't find somebody more passionate about keeping, keeping things centered on the student, being efficient and operating smoothly. And I'd like to also say that we're really close to hiring a new Maintenance Manager, a new position, so that we'll have supervision to help promote accountability, to help provide direction. And Steve and I have gone through the Mort Report in fine detail. And so Steve's gonna go through a handful of the takeaways, the pieces that we're gonna focus on for our plan right off the top. And so Steve, take it away.
Thank you, thank you Steve, appreciate it. Glad to be here in Tacoma Schools. I was 12 years at Bethel as the Director of Facilities and we did some terrific things there. And I'm glad to be here at Tacoma Schools to take this report that we have. That is, is opportunities, you know, and to move along. So you can see, we've kind of created sort of a vision here, and this is just the start of what we're looking at. And we understand that this district's strategic goals is what we want to meet. There's some times that I've had the opportunity to testify on the behalf of WMOA, which is the Washington Association of Maintenance and Operations Administrators, to talk about what's important about school districts and facilities. And I've always come away with one statement that we've, that we do is enhance the educational environment to promote student achievement. And that's what we do, that's part of the thing. So we took away about six bucks, about six items from this review and, next slide. And as you can see, it's, one back. As you can see, it's work environment, morale and communication and metrics for measuring performance achievement goals. And we're gonna prioritize and track preventive maintenance, we understand that's, that's a big thing here. Team leadership is important, supervision and accountability, it goes along with that. Continuous improvement in a growth model for the operations and review. And then at the end, we're gonna use, we're gonna use technology to boost what we need to do. So, the next slide please. So under, under the first one, work environment morale, we're just gonna, you know, we're gonna change the organizational structure. We've already started doing that. We're aligning the positions that can meet the demands of a large organization of 300-plus. We're gonna create opportunities for professional development. I believe everyone in our organization should have the opportunity to learn more about what they're doing and we're gonna find those ways. One of the large ones here is really, is to look at the atmosphere we have and to make sure that it's, that we have integrity, support and transparency within our organization. So when anybody calls on us, they know what they're, what they're gonna get. And then I always believe that the branding, building unity through branding, and that could be uniforms. I think uniforms are really important, that our staffs, be the operation or the maintenance staff, is identifiable when they walk through your doors and you know. Secondly, the, the metrics for measuring. We're gonna craft new mission, vision and value statements that meet the district goals. We're gonna define our metrics, we're gonna find some processes that's gonna have some service impact right from the get-go. Work orders, preventive maintenance and facility usage, these are three items that we know are important to the success of this district to operate, to be, be part of the community. And then we're gonna assess ourselves every day, every week, we're gonna evaluate what we do to see what we can, what we can improve on. The next one here is prioritize. Well, prioritizing our work and tracking preventive maintenance, I've kind of put some items up there, talking about prioritization of work orders and PM through categories. We're gonna look at, we're gonna try to really work to these at one to three days on very high. Emergencies will be emergencies and they take away from that. Four to 10 days and anything low, more than two weeks. But we're gonna really track these and try to find out where our bottlenecks may be. But I think we're gonna do well with those. We're gonna, we're gonna develop some new key performance indicators and identify those opportunities that aren't normally addressed right now, but we're gonna find them. And then we're gonna build on our work. We're gonna build on the success and continue that. And then team leadership, very important. As Steve alluded to and the report alluded to, is that there wasn't a, the leadership was scarce in this department with the number of people you have to, to manage. And we have found, and Steve has hired me and we're gonna hire a maintenance manager, where with the team we have, we're gonna take our skills that we've learned from other organizations and build this team to be what it needs to be. Which allows us to increase our supervision and collaboration. And then the last thing is to make sure that you see us in the district and we're doing the job we need to be doing. The, the last one here, or not the last one, but the, let's, continual improvement and growth model. As you can see, we're just gonna build trust and teamwork. It's all transparent. It's, it's an individual mutual accountability. We're gonna put everybody, we're gonna make everybody accountable for what their job is. Communication is important to me. I, today, I go and talk, make sure I talk to everybody, one time, at least one time during the day to make sure, especially in our office and then as we move out. Roles and responsibilities are really important. I think that the people, if they know their jobs and they know what they're responsible for, that we'll get those desired outcomes from and we'll communicate what those are. Clear concise expectations are really good opportunities to measure those things. And again, professional development is a paramount opportunities for success. And last, you can't really do anything without technology these days. And so right now, our work order program, we're gonna update, we're gonna upgrade that. We're looking at some other web-based systems that other school districts are using, larger ones than us, which would be Seattle and Spokane, and they're, and they're very, they're valuable there and they've, they've worked well. And I believe they'll work here because I've used them at Bethel. We're gonna put technology in our, in the hands of our employees so they know what's going on. We're going to enhance the, we're gonna use the key performance indicators to enhance our opportunities. And then, the last thing is we're gonna communicate our change and celebrate our effectiveness with what we do. Every day, we're gonna, we're gonna talk about what we do is important. So that's what we have.
Yeah, I would add that Steve in his former position was one of the two model schools that we, that the team went to interview, to see how to be effective and to see how we can work better. And through Steve's leadership at WMOA, he's really been the voice for taking things further than just Maintenance and Operations and really understanding how it is the role that they play affects the student and outcomes. And so as we reflect on the report and we look at where the needs are, there is a, there is a gap between some of the employees and leadership. We, we have some phenomenal people, we really do. And I think we're gonna reach a new level of respect, mutual respect going both ways. And we've already started to talk and communicate in ways we haven't ever before, getting the group together, enjoying working together and communicating about our priorities and our tasks. We're gonna establish a quality of work-life committee so we can start talking about how it is, how are we being effective in what we're doing. For the first time, trades are gonna be able to collaborate with each other. Right now, our plumbers, for example, are split between teams and they don't get much of an opportunity, a structured opportunity to come together to talk about best practices or what tools we need or how do we need to come together on this one task. And so we're looking at communication between employee to employee, team leaders, our supervisors in the evening, our managers in the day, and Steve and I at a higher level trying to make us all realize the path we're walking and to be more effective and efficient on it. So, I thank you for the report. There's a lot of stuff that we're working on, but it's exciting and we have the right people that are passionate about it to get this done. So I'm excited about reporting back over the next few quarters and talking about what systems we're putting in place and how we're performing and setting goals and telling you in an honest way where the work is and how effective we're being.
Alright, thank you. Any questions, your comments? Director Miller.
So thank you for the report.
You're welcome.
This helps us as a board to look to see how the district's doing and possibly make some corrections and really see the good and the bad and be transparent. I think that is wonderful that we are able to share the bad along with the good. The Steves, thank you for the presentation. You've got some good things in place. However, I've been at this for a while now and I always see the words and they look great. And Steve, you talked about how you're starting to develop that relationship with your various teams. That is incredibly hard to do, especially since I've been on the board, it seems like that has been one of the top issues in this district is that department and how they haven't gotten along over the years. So I would like to see as part of your report to really show how you are So I would like to see, as part of your report, to really show how you are developing that relationship with, with the workers, with your fellow team members, because I think that's how you have to look at them, as fellow team members, not as supervisors and the plumbers and, and the carpenters. I mean, it's one big team. And in the report, it says, you know, the Bethel School District, I'm looking at here right now, they use, and, thank you, Steve, for this. They use weekly staff meetings and monthly safety meetings to boost employee involvement. Their leads, supervisors, managers and directors are visible. They, and I like this part here, they frequently operate out in the field, making them accessible and able to monitor the work environment. I think that is one of the big key pieces right there, and if you can continue to keep doing that in Tacoma, I think we'll see, we'll see the positive results. If you don't keep doing that in Tacoma, we will continue on the same road that we had been on. So I have hope, but I also know it's a darn tough job you've got ahead of you, and I know you've got a great crew there, but there's a lot of healing that needs to go on, so.
I can't wait to come back and report to you. I really can't.
I can't wait either.
We're excited.
Director Wensko.
So when I hear that so many people wanted to come to you, Jevon, and talk, that were, you know, that you couldn't even accommodate, and then I, so Steve, you're new in this position. Are you going to have an open door policy at first to, like, invite people to come and express themselves and on an individual basis, or how do you think you're going to operate?
Well, I've, I've met with the team already, and I have an, I'm open door. And actually, I do a lot of talking, and, because I believe communication is important. And my, my host, my skill is just communication, and making people feel good about what they're doing. And every conversation I have, I, I take, I take the opportunity in sort of a mentoring type of opportunity, where when we talk to somebody, I ask them what they're looking for, and we try to find ways to make it right. So I make them feel good about what their job is. And so if I'm looking at them, and I talk about professional development, or I talk about what makes, what makes them important, what makes them, you know, what makes them get up to work, come to work at Tacoma Schools? What, what is that? Let me find out what that is. That's what, that's what I do. And open door, open door means I'm in the field. Open door means, you know, wherever that, wherever that door is at, I'm going to be talking to them. And then the team that we're putting together, that's, we're going to be doing the same thing on, on, on every opportunity we have to communicate with them, to challenge them to, to understand. And that's what transparency is about, is that they understand where we're at. I'm very horizontal in my structure. I flatten it out, because everybody is in this together.
Thank you.
Yes.
Sounds good.
The quality of work-life committee that Steve referred to is a very powerful tool. It includes a cross-section of the MNO organization with facilitation from Human Resources to really give people another, another set of tools and another conduit to get information in front of the Steves.
I think that's going to stick.
We've got three Steves now, Jemel. I'm beginning to wonder, is that a qualification?
Or Steve squared?
Thanks.
No, Steve cube, you got Jemel too.
I think all of this looks great. I'm always one for building efficiencies and integrating technology and continuous improvement, and people particularly having clear and concise goals for what they're doing and why they're here. And I don't need to tell you that I've been saying for a long time that I want everybody in the district to know what they mean by every student, every day, and how their role interacts with that. So that's very, very exciting to me. Change, even positive change, for people that have been with an organization for a long time can have a, be a difficult impact. So I want to make sure that we have support for our teams in those transitions. Technology, of course, I love technology, but if people have been working in the districts for a long time without it, implementing that technology should be, can be very challenging. So I want to make sure that we are providing support, so people have an opportunity to learn that technology and make the transition. You look like you're going to say something. Okay. And sustainability. And I, I know one of these Steves rather well, but I can tell by your nods that you've probably already worked that into your plans. But so those are the things that I'm going to be looking for when you come back in particular, just to make sure that we don't start something this year, that two years from now we can't keep going, because that could be much more detrimental to the long-term health of this organization otherwise. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Vice President, Yell.
Thank you. Overall, I liked the report, and I like, I think it pretty much confirmed a lot of what we've known hearsay, you know, during the times that I've been here on the board. But what I meant, I'm interested in is, are you going to come back to us with an actual implementation plan with benchmarks like we have for the academic side?
Yes.
In other words, percentages and so on?
Yes.
And also, will your benchmarks be prioritized, or you're going to ask as to what comes first, second, third, fourth, in terms of what you're going to do? I mean, you've got a lot of recommendations on a lot of things, and I assume that you've set your priorities. So I would like to see an implementation plan with benchmarks coming back to us, because I've been around the management block a long, long time, and it's, it sounds feel-good, sounds good, but when the rubber hits the road, sometimes if we don't have those actual implementation plans in front of us, and can yank them out of the drawer every once in a while, because not everything's going to be sweetness and light, we know that. I, I think as a, as a board member, I would like to see us, see you put together, like we have with planning and construction timelines and so on, for the implementation of where you want to see all of these recommendations and how soon you're going to get there.
We will present it.
Superintendent Santorno.
So one of the things that we've asked Steve to do is to work with Jennifer, because Jennifer Troffler has been through this. And, you know, she's got that grid that says, here's what we're going to do first, second, third, fourth and fifth. Here's the timeline, here's the calendar. And so I know that Steve won, I have to call you Steve one and Steve two, I don't know. Steve won has really worked with her and has already looked at that. So we'll expect to have that, that same kind of reporting on a quarterly basis.
Great. Thank you.
I appreciate the work. I appreciate.
Just, just one more thing I really appreciate, is that intangible, that's really tough to measure, I'm going back to relationship. And if we can somehow measure that, that improvement of relationship within the MNO department, I, that's what I would like to see, because processes you can get in place, but it's that intangible that really does make a difference. So that's why I would challenge you on that. Thank you.
I would like, I would like to add one thing. You talked about lean, right? We, we just hired a gentleman who's a green belt in lean. Right? So that's going to help us as well.
Director Eschke.
I thought you were going to start doing martial arts.
That might be necessary.
You never know.
Sometimes that's what it takes.
Yeah.
Just to follow up on Director Miller's comments, I've worked at some private, private industries that use employee satisfaction surveys to try and measure it. You just have to be careful in the way that you apply the results, because they can be used in a negative way. I mean, I think that the district, district-wide, we've been pretty good about using results to provide resources. I don't have any other expectation from your group, and so, but it's just an idea. There's some good industry models out there that might be out of the box, so.
Right. I appreciate the report and the good work, and the fact that the consultants were literally levitating when we were talking about Bethel and the best practices. And so for us, I, I am optimistic that we have the right people in place at the top. My question has to do, we've, we've talked about managing change. What is your proposed methodology to lead change? Particularly if we're going to get into a process that's much more participative, and if folks aren't accustomed to it being participative, sometimes, you know, autocratic feels better than participative, because now I don't know what to do. So have you thought about how you're going to manage that leading, or the, the leading change piece, not just the managing change piece?
I think one of the pieces that I'm most excited about for that is documenting where the needs are through the lens of the workers, and having them buy in at their level. And so the quality of work-life committee is going to be integral to that. Building the database of preventative maintenance from across the district, it's, it's tied up in kind of an oral tradition passed from plumber to plumber kind of thing in each of those. And so to get those documented, to get those systematic pieces put in place. And then, I think there's, there's so much ground to build upon, there's so much potential to move up, just in going around and knowing everybody's name, and knowing who they are, that hasn't been in place in a long time. And so, there's a level of respect. And then with the systematic changes, we're going to prevent, present a plan to you that identifies the takeaways from those six points and the timeframes. And I think, just going back to what I said earlier, having everybody have a vested interest in the change is going to do the most good, right off the bat, having their voice heard in the process.
Okay. Thank you. Superintendent.
Any other questions for the H, MNO? I think one of the things that it's important to say too, is that one of the reasons we hired Steve to be the COO is his incredible understanding of meshing, you know, the technical and the mechanical work with a vision for, you know, for philosophy and serving kids and all those. I love to sit and listen to him, because he's not your typical, you know, CNO, C, C, and COO person. He really knows how to visualize that. And the fact that Steve was his mentor is just a real credit to us that we were able to get both of you. So I'm looking forward to the work. I know you're going to do a good job. You've, I think you didn't give yourself enough credit for all of the things you've already started, so that the recommendations, you know, have already been addressed. So many of them are already on the ground floor, so you've done a good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we going to hear anything more on HR? Is that the end of HR? Because I have.
No, they're coming up next.
Okay. Because I had a question.
Thank you, Peter and Jevon.
Just in case you fail to notice, I would like the HR team members to stand up, please.
Gail Elijah is our Director of Employee and Labor Relations, and with a frog in her throat, she's manning the clicker.
Did she catch it from you?
Don Lloyd, our Director of Leadership Development. Lisa Nolan, our Director of Recruitment, and Kelly Webster, who is our Director of Operations. I want to note that Gail and Kelly both have their HR certification, and a real strength that both Don and Lisa bring to the table is they have served as building principals. They know what good instruction looks like, they know what it takes to be a good teacher, and they have played a key role in the hiring of our new staff and signing, and including substitutes. So I do want to thank you for this opportunity to talk about the work we've been doing to move us to that next level. In 2011, WASA did a, a report, a review of the HR department, and noted some significant areas of concern. But in fact, that report did not go deep enough. And when I came in 2012, I brought our HR staff together to meet those challenges that they had identified and to dig further. And so our work was to create a vision and a mission, and to really identify what our weaknesses were. So when we had, we were involved with the, what we like to call the heart review, the HRT review, there were no surprises for us. We knew where our dirty laundry was, but we were committed to continuous improvement, and that meant that we were going to face the challenges we had, and there's, there's quite a few. But we're also going to celebrate our successes. So tonight, we're going to talk just about three areas of focus. We have less than 10 minutes to spend with you, and so we're going to hit the highlights. So this is the high view, and as Steve said, we hope to come back with more detail about our, our plans. So tonight, we're going to talk about our current reality, good, bad and ugly. We're going to talk about our next steps and the support needed. And so, the team is going to take part. One, because I wasn't sure my voice was going to last, but two, I wanted you to hear their voice and see their expertise. So we'll take it away, and we'll start with improving customer service.
So the current reality of our customer service is that the physical layout of the department really doesn't help support best practice in what customers need. We have worked hard already at implementing improved communications, and we've also looked at our processes for, for hiring, and we've made improvements in those areas. The staff survey that was put out to the entire staff showed improvement over the previous surveys. Our next steps are to create a welcoming department, and thanks to Cabinet and Steve Marakami, there are supports put in place and a plan to actually make that happen. So I'd like to invite all of you to do a walkthrough of the department, so that you can see the before and the after. We need to continue and fully implement the communication plan, and we need to continue and improve partnering with our stakeholders. We also need to use a systematic approach at implementing the recommendations of this report, as well as to continue the, the survey on an annual basis. I mentioned the welcoming space that's in place. What we really need is regularly scheduled face-to-face time with all TPS administrators for communication and training, and we need IT support.
Okay, and I'm going to talk about improving selection and hiring processes. So our current reality, if you just look at the numbers that are on this slide, we have nearly 500 job descriptions, many of which are out of date. We process about 20,000 applications each year, and we have some non-standardized interview questions, and there's a lack of training on behalf of our administrators. So that's our reality. Part of it is wrapping our brains around the sheer numbers and volume of what we're, what we're working with. So to, to attack that, we need to develop some updated job descriptions and create some standardized behaviorally-based interview questions, so that we get at the heart of the behaviors that, in teachers and workers, that promote and augment success. And we need to have training sessions for our administrators on hiring best practices, because as a department, we don't oversee every interview that happens. They may happen in the school building or in a different department, but we take on that responsibility to ensure that people are trained adequately. We need to, and we're in the process of the beginning phase of creating an HR advisory team. We launched an induction program for our teachers that started in January that we're very proud of. We need to continue that effort and partner with CNI to make that be the best that it can be. And in July, we will launch our first-ever HR boot camp, and we will have the support of finance and student services, and eventually CNI will join in on that as well. So what do we need for support? You know, oftentimes, it boils down to money, and we can't get those job descriptions updated without the, the effective effort and time that it will take to do so. So we need funding for that, and funding for the support of a professional organization to help us with those interview questions that are behaviorally-based and research-based, to help us identify those best practices for the interview questions. Again, we get back to those 20,000 applications that come in and the various positions that we have. And funding for the teacher induction and mentoring program, because we're quite confident that if we put money in at the front end, it will save us in the long run. And ultimately, executive sponsorship, with, which I think this speaks volumes to that already, being here to present to you. Support from the school board, support from Superintendent Santorno, and, and the district as a whole. So we see that executive sponsorship, and we need for that to continue and request for that to continue, please. IT support, so that we can drill down and understand the data, so we can adequately analyze it. And I think we're about ready to talk about metrics and quarterly reports.
Well, who doesn't love metrics and quarterly reports? That's all I've got to say.
Some of us nerdy people, Gail.
Yes, we do. As do I. That's why, that's my topic. So we are, we are already in the process of gathering data and doing some analysis. We, we started that a year ago. We're continuing to look at things. These are some of the areas that we've already started to look at, to gather some information, to see what we, where we're going to go with it, and what we want to, what, what the data means to us and to the district. Our next steps is, we really want to, and will be using the Great City Schools' key performance indicators to measure our human resource effectiveness. Some of the areas we're already doing that with are our substitute fill rate, our retention, and our time to hire for our certificated and our classified staff both. So we're already gathering information about what that looks like, what it means to, for improvement. And through that analysis and those K- And through that analysis and those KPIs, we're going to be able to determine the critical needs of our human resources department and our customers. Then, based on the information that we're going to gather, that will really help us get those effective action plans in place. We will also, as, as Steve, as Steve and Steve mentioned, we want to use that data to also highlight our accomplishments. Because we have done some great things already. We have a long way to go, but we have done some hard work. And it will also provide us with the opportunity to give Superintendent Santorno a quarterly report on where we are in the areas that have been identified. The support that we need for this is, we do need IT support. We've mentioned that in all three of our areas. What that means is somebody to help us get the data. That's always a complicated piece is to be able to dig deep into our data warehouse to pull that data out and what is the right data for us to pull and where do we get it. So, our IT friends have already started helping us with that. We're already partnering with them, and we want to move forward with that. And then, of course, again, executive sponsorship to help, help us on the decisions that we do make as a team and we present to the Cabinet, the Superintendent, and the school board to be able to implement those action plans that, that we come up with. Last year, we partnered with finance and had our entire department trained in the lean process. And then again, worked on it this fall. We felt that that was very important because we are concerned about our, our, the common practices we use for hire, interview, and addressing issues in the CBA. As you'll recall, last year, I came to you numerous times asking for approval of our CBAs. We set a historic record with having several five-year agreements. We spent over 500 hours at the bargaining table last year. This fall, I will come to you, and we will have all of our bargaining units with a valid CBA. That's something we're also very proud of. But it took a lot of time and energy. And while we continue to focus on customer service, time to hire, processes, hiring the absolute best folks we had, we have been developing work plans. We are developing our benchmarks, and that's why we've asked for that support from IT. And as, as Kelly said, we've had excellent support. We have the right team in place. You can see the commitment these folks have. We have developed a team. We've developed a family. We're not afraid to talk about our warts, and we love celebrating our successes. We plan to be a world-class department in order for this to be a world-class, class district. We have approximately 5,000 employees. Approximately 2,000 of those are teachers. We focus, one, on getting the best teachers we absolutely can. We have already signed 43 letters of intent for next school year. Because one of the best practices is to hire early. We, Director Miller mentioned our showing, and Director Viall, we're at the recruitment fair in, at the Tacoma Dome. That's only one of the activities that we have taken on this year. We sent a team to the historic black colleges to see what we could do to foster partnerships, to recruit staff who are representative of our, our students. We are committed to excellence, and you'll see as we, if you glance up on the board, we have decided to toot our horn a little bit. Last fall, I began asking the staff to send me their kudos. Things that people had told them that we were doing well. Because when you're looking at your warts, you still want to look in the mirror and see something pretty, too. And so, I'm really proud of the work that our team has done. We are working very hard to make those connections. We will be back with you making reports, showing you our, our very in-depth plan of action and the progress we're making toward those. But you might want to take a minute. We're kind of proud of what they've said. Okay. Questions? Director Miller?
Oh, I did not get the memo on wearing the blue shirts.
I know what I'm doing. And I didn't give Jevon and Peter blue shirts. I'm so sorry. I will correct that.
So, yeah, that's a, a mark against you. Who brought in Lawson? When, when did we bring that in?
You know, you know, no, I want to, I want to- Sean, where are you? No, I want to address this with, with Director Miller because I can't get anybody to own that decision.
Well, I know we approved it. I, I gotta say that.
There's your answer.
Well, no, somebody recommended it. Somebody recommended-
Before my time.
Buck stops here, you know.
Well, but then, once again, if we're given a recommendation, we have to go along with that. You know, we aren't the professionals to dive into a, a human resources program. And Director Wenska and I were talking about it. We think we know who brought it to us.
I think Mrs. Santorno knows.
No, no, I'm not ratting anybody out. All I wanted to say is I've never been through a huge technology change or system or work where there weren't glitches.
Yes.
And where there wasn't, you know, there wasn't something that didn't work. And the bottom line is whoever the vendor is, they always promise they will do everything. If you need teachers to walk on the moon, then they will walk them on the moon. And then, when it comes time to implement it, they say, "Yeah, we can walk them on the moon. It'll cost you 18 more million dollars. Do you mind that?" And so, I think that you guys have coped very well, and you've really worked through it. I think the recommendation says we need to continue to, you know, explore it and look what it can offer us. And, you know, we've got lots of new systems going on in the district, and each one of them have been challenging. And so, I appreciate your perseverance and the fact that you've continued to work through and our public has been very, has had a lot of perseverance also.
That's who we thought. So, somebody did get ratted out. But we know who it was anyway. You know, just a real brief history, and Debbie can go further back than I can, but HR has, not currently, but when, when I started on the board, it was a problem. We would have administrators coming back from Lagos, and they, if there's no spot, they'd be put in HR. So, it's not that they weren't, you know, weren't good, it just-
I went to Lagos.
But, but we also know you went to Puyallup, okay? There was a step in between.
I'm in there too.
Well, okay, yeah. So, I'm talking about coming right back from Lagos.
You're on a roll tonight, sir.
Oh, boy. I saw it, Jevon.
But Don didn't go into HR, did he?
No, I didn't.
That's the, what I'm saying is that we didn't get the qualified HR managers that we should have in, in there, and we paid the price. We've done, we did a review a few years back, and, and Debbie and I, and Catherine was not- were you? No, you weren't on the board at that time.
There was another review before that?
No, under R. Under R, yeah.
2011.
And I tell you, it was not fun. It, it, yeah, I'll just keep it at that. So, there's been a history, unfortunately, with HR. And it's not going to be a ship you can turn around right away because of everything that's happened in the past. But I have been hearing better things, good things since, since you've come on, Lynn.
Thank you.
You know, we did have that little fiasco. We had somebody coming in, and they heard Lynn wanted the job, so they quit before they even started.
I liked that story.
Yeah. But, so, it's been, yeah, it's been, it's been the headache, let's say, over the years, that and, and M and O. So, it's nice that we're talking about both of them tonight. But, yeah. And one of the things you brought up was the teachers of color. So, thank you for sharing that. That was going to be one of my questions because we have to represent what our students are there. So, just personally, I was just sent a recommendation form for a former employee of mine. And I, I should say that it can use, the process can use improvement.
Amen.
It was a pain in the, you know what?
Yes.
To do it rather than doing it online, click everything, send it off. And, and I thought, when I was doing that, I'm going, I'm going to talk to Lynn about this one.
So, I'm glad you brought that up because that's one of the weaknesses of the Lawson system. It doesn't have that automatic reference system. And so, Lawson is clunky. But I want to thank Karen Lorenz and her team and Sean Taylor because they listen to our complaints, and then they problem solve. So, we do have a process called Skill Survey that is, we're putting in place, and we'll have that same capacity to send out a, a reference that you can click, 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 answer all the questions, and it comes back automatically. We have someone basically spending three hours a day just scanning references and materials that, that don't come in automatically electronically. It, it is a clunky system, but despite that, these folks come to work every day smiling and trying, trying to solve the problems. But that is, that's, that's a, a big deal.
You're talking 20,000, 20,000 applications, and you want the recommendations, everything else? Yeah, so-
Keeping, are you, are you trying to keep in with our timeframe?
Yeah, so, yes.
Not here at 7:30.
I am done. Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. Director Wenska?
Yeah, so, I want to thank everybody, anybody here who did Lawson work because that was so labor-intensive. And we took people from all these departments together for years. And Lynn, once again, I also am hearing just nothing but positive things about the direction of HR. So, thank you for that, and thank you to the rest of the team for helping her along. So, I have just a couple of specifics because I hear from people now and then who have trouble maneuvering through the system to get jobs. And I know somebody in food service was having trouble, and they actually went somewhere else because they couldn't get through. So, do we have a phone number that people can call when they can't do it on the computer?
Yes, we do. And as a matter of fact, one of our hu- human services representatives, Susan, is right here. We have telephone help, we have appointment help, and we have drop-in help. Our application system can be really tough. It is, it's not compatible with Macs. It, I know, I know. And it, I believe that we have lost candidates because they just threw up their hands and said, "This is too tough to maneuver." And that's why our, our, our folks like Susan and the other folks continually work with our answering the phone, answering questions, inviting people in. They, they've spent up to two hours with a candidate, helping them complete their application. And again, that's something that Karen and Sean and Karen's team are working on to make more user-friendly. But right now, that's the reality of our, our system.
So, when it comes to recruiting, and I'm always interested in recruiting, you know, I think that Fortlis and McCord are just a wonderful place to get people who are just like retiring. And I've met people in our district before who are great. Steve's story, our new employee, said he came from McCord. So, I think they're well-trained to do a variety of jobs. And then, I know food service, we have huge problems, you know? And I look at the Puyallup Fair, and I look at the number of food vendors that they hire. Maybe we go to the health department, sit there while they take their tests and say, "When you're done with the fair, and you have your food hammer charged, come over to Oklahoma." Really? You know? Going to do whatever.
And we're, we're also in the process of, have ironed out some issues. So, we're going to be able to use some of our, our students, for instance, from Oakland or the re-engagement-
Yes, I do know that, yeah.
Engagement Center.
I saw that.
Well, unfortunately, many of our, our food service workers, because it's part-time work, end up working the fair to make ends meet.
Yeah. Thank you.
Director Oshka?
So, I don't want to like drag this horse too far down, but man, I remember a report from HR in a completely different world where I asked for some data about customer service response. And I was the crazy person because you could not get data on that sort of thing in an HR environment. So, I am looking at the sea of blue, and I know it's a new day for human resources for Tacoma Public Schools, and I'm delighted by that.
Thank you.
Some things that I have some questions about or would like to see in future reports is, as you're looking at equity recruitment, I mean, we all know that that is a challenge, not just for us, but it's a global challenge. I want to know what works.
Okay.
That's some things that we can share with our partners because it's important for-
No, they'll steal our, they'll steal-
No, we're going to steal theirs.
Systems, not people. Systems, not people. I would like to know more about what our onboarding process is like for everybody. I want to make sure that there's cultural competency in there and some kind of accountability to make sure that people not just go through that class, but they authentically integrate it into what they do. It's extremely important, as you know, particularly for anybody interacting with students, but really for anybody, even our maintenance staff should have some kind of understanding of that. I am hearing, as I'm talking to people, that there is a community concern, that we have a lot of teachers that are getting near retirement and what's going to happen when all of a sudden we have brand-new teachers. So, I'm wondering about funding. I heard some requests for funding, so I want to know what those are so we know how we're going to fund it. And I don't, I don't see any new revenue, so I would rather know sooner or later so that we can plan effectively. But how are we going to address a younger teaching staff and making sure that they have the supports that they need to be strong teachers in our schools? So, and again, new day in Tacoma Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you. One thing I'd like to, to just share is that as part of our new teacher induction series, we are working with them on cultural competency. We think that's very, very vital, and we hope to expand that. It really is something not just for our new hires, but it is for our entire employee population.
Yep.
Thank you. And we will look to provide that information in the future.
Wonderful, thank you.
Great. Thank you, Lynn, and your staff. I was an employee when they did Lawson, and I remember what a nightmare that was for us to try to get our data and our time sheets and all that stuff. And I think you've come a long way. But just in general, I, when I read through the report, there were more, a lot more positives than there were negatives from four years ago when I came on this board. And I know that 20,000 apps and all of that, you know, I didn't have any real questions, just comments. I'm really glad to see training our principals and administrators on best hiring practices because most of our principals aren't really trained to be managers or hirees, and Don knows, and Lisa knows. And I think now that we've made them the instructional leaders and opportunities for hiring, that they really need that additional training. And I'm sure that they also have asked for that. The IT stuff, I guess I'd like to know a little bit more, may come back to the board, maybe you and Sean, as to what really kind of IT that we need in, with Lawson, or what kind of data banks are you building and doing so that we make sure that we're not losing new hirees, like the phone thing and that. And at some point, that's one of the things that I would like to see, and I know you're working on it, and give us a progress report.
Be happy to.
How we can, I mean, we've got amazing data stuff on, you know, the kids and how we can get into that. I think we, it'd be nice we could have a comparable system for you where that doesn't cost, as Carla said, another 18 million dollars, you know, that kind of thing. Anyway, thank you all for the hard work that you're doing and that you're continuing, continuing to do back there. And I just want to mention that Susan is an IB grad of Henry Foss.
Yay!
One of our own came back. So, anyway, thank you. Appreciate it.
And I want to thank you and the, the board and the superintendent, deputy superintendent for this support. We have had our growing pains, and I appreciated being able to share concerns, get advice, and the support that you've given us because we too want to make a difference for every student every day, and we think we can do that by putting the right people with, in the right jobs.
You know, we're there when we see a positive approach, and that's what we've seen. And I thank you very much.
Thanks so much.
Great. Superintendent Santorno?
I just wanted to say how much I appreciate the team. You guys have been tenacious. They never say uncle. They just keep right on going. And it's amazing how you've become kind of the inner clock of the district. And when things happen well, and you're positive, and you work to support people, what a difference that makes. So, I really appreciate the work you've done and appreciate the fact that you take it so seriously and that they really, I mean, really, if you really want to know what's going on, and if you want good candy or good anything, go to the fourth floor, okay? Thank you. Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent Santorno, moving on to the innovative RFP review and approval.
So, the board has started an innovative process that, who knew where we were going to end up and what we were going to do? And so, it's been exciting. And Tony Pace has really coordinated a lot of the work, and it's been one of those things where the devil's in the details. I should stop and thank you, Peter and Jevon, again.
Yes, thank you very much for your good work. And I think you do, too.
Really appreciate it. Listen to me. Right here.
For coming back.
Big Steve and Little Steve. No.
Go ahead. Take a break. Yeah, we're just going to wait- Take two minutes, okay? -if everybody gets set up. Director Mills out, Director Oshka be right back, so.
We all just-
Debbie, are you leaving?
Nope. Okay, good. I saw you pack and step up. I want to go introduce myself.
Are you ready?
If everybody gets set up and Director Mills out, Director Oshka will be right back, so. Baby, are you leaving?
Nope.
Okay, good, I saw you pack and step up and make sure that we're, I'm gonna go introduce myself. Yeah. Yeah. Oh, sure. Okay, sounds good. Thanks. Yeah, can we just turn? Okay, we ready? Anyway, welcome. Thank you. Okay, Superintendent Santorno, you want to get us back on track here?
Sure. So, um, anyway, Ms. Pace, we appreciate the work you've put into this effort. You've, uh, led the cabinet and I know collaborated with, uh, many other departments to get this work done, especially, we know that Roslin's been a big part of it and helped. Uh, Steve Demel's here, I know he's, he's worked a lot with you. So, anyway, we know this has been a really goo- good evidence of people not working in silos, but instead really working collaborativ- collaboratively. So, we're looking forward to, um, looking at your, uh, request for proposals.
Thank you. So, we're gonna talk a little bit about, excuse me for my voice, I don't, I don't know what's going on with my voice, I have a cold and it just all's down there, so if I can't talk anymore, Roslin certainly can carry on for me here, and, and also Dr. Garcia as well.
You know, we want you to go home and go to bed and stake Monday off, okay?
I, yeah, I think I, I think I need to. Thank you. That's a good plan.
Either that or with everybody getting sick, we need to fumigate this place or something.
I know. Something's wrong here. Um, so, uh, this has been, uh, really exciting for me, um, being in this district for seven years now and being, uh, around when some of our other innovative programs got started, like Lincoln Center and Sammy and just a lot of really great things happening and, and the journey that we've been on. So, quickly, tonight, I know we're, uh, getting close to our seven-thirty timeframe, I wanted to kind of revisit a little bit about where, um, how we started, uh, this. In January, we, of course, there's a board policy, we have three of them, uh, and those are, uh, advertised on our website in our, our policy manual. Uh, but in, in January of this year, talking specifically about tonight's, uh, request for proposals, um, you talked, uh, as a, as a board around, um, a new idea for an east-side or south-end neighborhood school. And you looked at a, a portfolio of schools that we have in the district and looked at, you know, a map of them and looked at what we provided for our students and decided that, that, you know, really what we needed was, uh, something on the east side and south end. Due to two reasons, lack of innovative schools in that area compared to the rest of the city, and also that our demographics, uh, projections showed that, that we were gonna have some growth in that area, and we wanted to have something there for our students in that, in that area. So, um, you also set some parameters at that time, uh, and all these things, uh, with very skillful work of Steve Demel, uh, is on our website if you go in there and see. This, this information is there for those people who put together the, um, proposals. The innovation shall reflect best practices and be supported by compelling theory demonstrating they will produce expected outcomes. So, again, we're measuring their, their success as we go along. The district shall be fiscally responsible, that's the budget piece, supporting innovative approaches, maximize public, private, and philanthropic resources, and ensure it can be sustained, uh, throughout time. Flexibility and autonomy are necessary for innovation, accountability for effective implementation, uh, and results are required, so your board policies also reflect that. Therefore, planning and implementation of innovation shall include a continuing assessment and improvement process to ensure the innovations are achieving their identified outcomes and whether improvements are needed. So, it's an ongoing process, something that will be evaluated, um, on a regular basis. So-
Real quickly, if we just jump in real, tonight, what we'll be looking for from you is just to inform you about where we are, and so Tony's gonna go into some of these details. We won't be looking for, obviously, any action, and Tony will be reviewing the timeline, which will tell you your decision-making timeline that you've agreed to as a board. Um, we won't also be making a specific recommendation to you one way or the other. This is, um, a process-
We won't?
We will not.
Then we won't.
We will not. Your board, uh, policy says our job is just to score the recommendations, or, excuse me, the proposals, and bring them to you for you to make decisions from there.
Okay, so what you're telling us tonight will be an information gathering-
Yes.
-session about this, and then we will be coming back and making a decision at a later time.
Yeah, we both, in, in the audience, we have-
Is that correct?
That is correct, thank you, Director Viall. Um, in addition to that, in, in the audience, we have representation from two of the proposals that were submitted and scored, and so there is an opportunity to ask any clarifying questions. You've had the proposals in advance, um, and at the same time, um, if there are none at this time, we can always bring folks back as well.
Great.
Thank you.
And I believe you did get a copy of the proposals?
Yes, we did.
Yeah, so you've had that, an opportunity to take a walk through those. So, the results of the RFP process, uh, through the month of, um, um, March and Feb- and April, I believe, we accepted proposals, and we ended up with, at, at the end of April, eight letters of intent were submitted, four proposals were, were received, actually written, and, uh, two of those, uh, out of the four waivers were, or proposals, were actually waivers for, um, new school proposals. So, they were, um, basically asking for waivers to certain policies that are already in place and, pardon me? For current schools, yes, thank you. My brain's a little-
So, the policy says for innovative schools, schools that are deemed innovative, they have the ability to off, ask for policy waivers. And two of our innovative schools are not new schools, obviously, and so they will be seeking waivers through that same proposal process.
And we'll be bringing you information about that, too, so you'll, you'll get that information as well. Um, we did receive two new school proposals, and they are, uh, the Industrial Design Engineering and Art School and the Healthy Nurture and Training Minds Academy School. Um, those are the two proposals that you have copies of, and, uh, they did a very good job of going through the actual, um, document and filling it out and, uh, and turning it in. So, um, we have been through a, an initial, uh, scoring process, and we have an average score up there. You can see that they're fairly close and they're pretty high, um, between the two academies or two schools at this point.
In addition to that, we've ran it through legal counsel to determine if there are any fatal flaws, if you will, that could, and both options are viable options for you to consider. And so, um, although each proposal would have some work to be done, uh, to work through there, and it would, uh, not necessarily, uh, be in a situation to be approved as completely written, because there are some issues, they are innovative, that we would need to work through, we believe that the teams, um, as Assistant Superintendent Pace mentioned, um, score high enough to be viable options, and that the one-year planning period, um, if you choose to move forward with an option, uh, we could work through the situations and make sure that, uh, they were both up and running in, in a, in a safe and legal manner.
We also had HR look through it, um, as well. Um, and they didn't, you know, there were some things that they wanted to work through, but there were no fatal flaws as well that, that they didn't think could be worked out. So, I have, uh, here a, a copy, a, a look at the, um, timeline, and, um, it's, this is the actual timeline as it appears, uh, in our, on our website. Um, it's kind of hard to read, um, you know, we can look at that one, there's also this copy as well, and this one's equally as hard to read in this, uh, uh, format, but, um-
We wanted to make sure you had equal opportunities to have difficulty reading our documents tonight, so.
I can read it fine, Tony.
Well done. Thank you.
I need to set up binoculars, but I, I have a copy here that I can look at, so. Uh, so, this, this is the, the, I think this is the clearest of, of them all, it's a little more detailed. Um, you can see where we are, uh, if you look through that on April twenty-four, uh, May, I'm sorry, May twenty-first, which is tonight, the board provides direction for moving RFPs forward to implementing or not. So, what that means is that, you know, there's no decision on each, either of them at this night, but, but tonight, what you will be saying, yes, move forward, um, to fulfill the rest of this timeline, which is May twenty-third is recommend proposals run through a program placement process. Now, on May twenty-eighth, there's a board public discussion, so people would, that would be advertised, and people would come here and weigh in on, on the proposal or proposals. Uh, June tenth would be the first June, uh, is the first June board meeting for board approval, and then there's a second, uh, reading, uh, on June twenty-fourth for, uh, the final, uh, board approval. And if you approve a school at that point, then it moves to the implementation process for, um, uh, that you've identified in the board policy. So, that means it, it basically is going, going to go through a year of review and, and planning, and we would, you know, involve our project management department that would help us work through that, and we would be giving you quarterly updates as to where we are with the, what hurdles we're having to deal with, what other advice we might need from you. Um, and so, that's, that's where we are right now. Tonight is kind of an information night where I, I think we're gonna ask you just to let us move forward with, um, looking at these proposals in a little more detail and providing you more information along the way.
Or if you're not interested in either or, like, you know, then this would be an opportunity, but th- this is all new for all of us, right? And so, what's, by policy, is, uh, well, the policy articulates is that we will make, you will make a decision one way or the other to either move forward, uh, through an adoption or to say that you do not want either RFP that's submitted, if you will, uh, or proposal, excuse me, for the RFP submitted, um, by the end of June. And so, we have tried to, through this chart, craft up some steps for, steps for you to consider, but they're all, um, negotiable, if you will, or, uh, you can change the process, if you will.
They, they do mirror what you have in your policy, you know, if you look at the, um, I think it's twenty-ten, uh, policy, it does identify the months, you know, so that's how we, you know, develop this timeline based on, on your board policy, which identifies the months and how it will proceed. That doesn't mean we can't change it, you know, if we find as we go along that it's not working or that we have a better idea, um, an innovative idea that might change the, the course of our work.
Okay, so what we would like for us to tell you yes or no about moving forward?
Well, I guess, well, the first thing is, is do you have any questions about-
Well, I mean, what you want in the final analysis before we get to the questions, that's what you want, is a decision tonight to move forward?
Do you want us to move forward with that, uh, timeline?
Yes, okay, great.
That's, that's kind of, that's what we need from you tonight.
Start with Director Oshka, questions?
Um, questions and comments, because it's me. Um, first, I'm really delighted by the, both proposals. I'm really, um, gratitude to the teams that put them together because I know that they're hard-working groups of people that put in extra time, so that's really cool. Um, that being said, I'm reading through my notes and what I'm, and I'm looking at community outreach, community outreach, community outreach, and I don't know that our timeline leaves enough for that, or do we do community outreach in that year review? Um, so just a question of, now that we've written our policy and put it into practice and finding the edges, I would, I encourage all of us to try and improve it.
That's a good point.
So, the earliest possible implementation of a new school will be two thousand and sixteen, yes?
Correct. The policy specifically articulates that there will be a whole year of planning-
Okay.
-and implementation.
It, it makes sense, I'm just clarifying. Um, what was your scoring, Rupert? Do I have that someplace and I'm not remembering it?
I think it was in, it didn't, it was included in the original RFP, uh, Steve Demel and many of us helped him create that, he did a lot, most of the work on it, but it is on our website.
That's okay.
It's essentially taking the application and then we just assign points to it, and then a grading system. So, we said, did the proposal meet the request of each of the different components within the requested application process, uh, requested application?
Okay, okay. Um, those are really the questions I have for right now. I mean, I think that, uh, making sure the public knows is a really big deal. I was talking to, uh, some community members that just discovered on the website, and they're like, "Wow, you guys are really cool, I wish I knew about this before." And that's always a problem.
Next year, yeah.
And our communication team does a great job, too, but trying to figure out depth, um, so that we're looking for a broader pool of ideas, future, and I'm not, I'm not making any comments, uh, in detriment to the current proposals. Thanks.
Director Oshka?
Okay, so my only comment is, I think that, um, the, uh, communication will come throughout the year as people hear about it and decide whether they want to go to these programs, so that's kind of what I'm looking at, is, uh, does it attract people? And, um, yeah, I would hope that we'd have that worked into the deadline, if so many people have to express interest to continue forward at a certain, it's a date certain, you know, probably next spring sometime.
Right.
And that's all I have to say. Director Miller?
I would suggest moving forward.
Great. Um, I'm in agreement with, uh, what Director Miller said about moving forward. I think, um, Director Oshka and Director Wensky's comments about we will get that public comment that we need as we begin to flesh these out over the next year, um, sorry, so that we can, uh, you know, make sure the public is aware of what's going on. I know there's a lot of excitement, I've had people that knew that these were coming in or said, "Gee, I think that's just awesome, that's part of, you know, what you guys are doing and expanding out opportunities for all of our kids and our equity policy stuff." So, is the consensus for us to tell the staff then to move forward?
Yes.
With the caveat that I really want some robust feedback from the community on the two proposals, because that makes a huge difference.
Right, and I think we, I'm pretty sure we'll get it. Okay, great, thank you. Um, Dr. Garcia and Mrs. Santorno, comments?
Very quickly, Vice President, uh, Viall, it would be helpful for us, uh, as we look at the, at the calendar, the May twenty-eighth, there will be obviously a, a, an opportunity for, uh, the community to provide direct feedback to there, but if there's any other information possibly that you would, or other board members would like, um, if that information can go to you or President Hines, um, if you'd like the teams there to do any further discussions, um, as you look at the, uh, the next, like, five weeks, it's a fairly aggressive, um, timeline in the sense for approval, um, both of these schools are designed to be, um, per your request, magnet-type schools, so they would be placed on the east or south side, uh, but they would, they would draw students from all over the, the district. Um, and then, any other information as the process goes, um, the staff would appreciate that that comes from the board, the information that they may need after they've had a chance to review the proposals again.
I know that last week, we asked on the benchmarks, um, that anyone who had any questions or, um, issues, submit those to President Hines. I'd ask that you do that again, and then he can forward them to Josh so that we have it coordinated, just email him with, you can CC me on that, so that we, you know, have a coordinated approach to what's going on.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. And, uh, hey, Director Oshka?
I apologize. Um, I, I, I'm, don't want to beat the dead horse of community outreach, but I'm not really looking for just an invitation for people to come here. As somebody who lives on the east side, south end, you gotta go there, we've gotta figure out a way to directly reach out to these communities in, in short order. Um, I wouldn't, I wouldn't dare approve a school in the east side, south end without that happening and expect to have a very pleasant future.
Is that something that you would, you would want to see be, on or before the twenty-eighth or throughout the course of next year, or both?
I need something, I need something before we make it, I can't make a decision without it.
Okay.
Um, and I would, will partner with you on that, I'm more than happy to.
Okay.
Well, I think that's indicative of any of our schools, that we shouldn't make any big decisions in any part of the city without going out to wherever the affected neighborhood is. So, I think we have a good model for what we've done with Wayne Wright, I think we can do the same here. Or we've met with the community several times in different settings over the last, um, this last year for the Wayne Wright program. Tony was involved in that, I know, so we have a good model.
But this is really about giving more choices to people, anyway.
It is, it is, but I think people just want to know what's going on, so are we, uh-
Feedback, though.
Feedback, correct, yeah.
Right, I want them to know that we're talking about it and not to be surprised and to know that they're included in, in the discussion.
All right, is there any more, uh, else for the good of the order?
Just a clarifying point, is it, does anyone have any questions for the, uh, the two submissees tonight? Otherwise, I'm, we, they can always come back.
I'll have questions on May twenty-eighth.
Okay.
I think we all will.
Yeah.
Great.
And, uh, Vice President Viall, I would appreciate maybe a five-minute presentation from each presenter or pro-
I assume that that would be part of what-
I would hope that-
I would hope, too.
Are we assuming that?
No.
Uh, we, we have just had a sidebar here, yeah. We thought that was a good idea. We thought that was a good idea.
Now you brought it up with, you know, I'm not gonna go into what assuming means, so we will, I will request that we do have a summary presentation from each of the groups that are bringing forward the RFPs.
So one of the unique things is, this is all new for all of us.
It's new for all of us, it's kind of fun.
Correct, and then at the same time that we have the flexibility to always change our internal practices, we also are setting precedent. I imagine that as we continue forward this, we will have more and more submittals and to consider in that opportunity, and so any questions that you would think in advance that we could share with the two proposals will help them present that information. So once again, going back to Vice President Viall's request of, if there's any information that you would like to hear in those proposals that we could then share with the presenters, that would be extremely helpful, and emailing us, that would be great.
Great.
So I remember when we had six schools come to us and do presentations, that's the kind of information, what kind of impact do they see, what kind of demographics are they really looking at? How do they grade out financially also? That's the, I think the financial piece is just as huge as the academic piece, so it's just those really basic questions that are key to what will happen, transpire with these programs, and, you know, I mean, I write grants for a living, and I've graded grants in DC, and, you know, it's, you look for specific things each time, and you're consistent on that, and that's how you end up getting good results.
Greatly appreciate that feedback.
It's gonna take a lot longer than five minutes each.
Well, and that's, you folks have done, Board of Directors, you've done a marvelous job in your earlier requests and policies from the financial piece. You know, you've had this journey of innovation for a long time and to put you in this policy, so what would be helpful for us is the information that you see, those little pieces that are not included in those applications, so the financial piece is there, and I so greatly appreciate, Director Miller, your expertise, because we put those financial pieces in there, but there are opportunities where they may not have the information that is necessary for you to make or helpful for you to make that decision, so any of that specific feedback would be helpful.
I would like to hear from the CFO specifically at that meeting, so, because I'm not a numbers person, I hate numbers. I love it when somebody that loves it...
We love it that she loves numbers.
That's exactly it.
I love it she loves numbers.
So a lover of numbers can actually share what she thinks.
Okay.
Lover of numbers.
Are we ready to adjourn? Go home? Great, thank you, good session, good stuff. Thank you very much.
Do you have a motion?
We need a motion to adjourn. Thank you.
Second.
Second, all those in favor?
Hi.
We are adjourned. Thank you.